All right, it's seven o'clock. I would like to welcome everybody in on the February 20th, 2025 meeting of the Village of Webster zoning board. We will begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Civil法 of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Well, and as many as you may know, earlier this month, we lost our colleague and chairman, Mark Nicholson. So please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Also at this time, I'd like to welcome our new zoning board alternate Joshua. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And now we do have to bring together, we are missing Larry tonight. So I need a motion to move Dave as from alternate to Larry's position.
I will make that motion that Mr. Woodlock joined us today as a full voting member of the board.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So today we have four items on the agenda. The first one is a tabled matter from last month. Is the applicant Yusuf Asadi here to represent his application? Okay, seeing none and being the second month in a row that we have tabled this application, I guess I'm looking for a motion to maybe deny without prejudice.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Peter, a second.
Second.
Second by Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Going down our list here, our second application is Jamie Pizzo, owner of 206 Curtis Park, tax ID number 080.14-3-3. Applicant seeks to install a 12 by 14, 168 square foot loft style with an 11.3 average height storage shed in the backyard, larger in area and taller in height than what is allowed pursuant to the village code 175-59 and 175-13 part F. Applicant therefore seeks an area variance of 28 square feet to allow a 168 square foot accessory building where a 140 square foot accessory building is allowed as well as relief from the current zoning for a 1.3 foot average height variance, seven feet, eight and a quarter inches wall height and 14 foot, 10 inch roof peak height, where 10 foot is allowed. Property is owned R1-13- or .6, excuse me. Is the applicant here for that? If you could please go to the podium and state your name and address for the record and tell us what you want to do.
Jamie Pizzo, 206 Curtis Park. We're just looking to install the shed at a larger size just to accommodate the limited space that we have inside the home. We've got like a crawl space attic that's entered through like a closet door. So it's not even like a full sized door and no real overhead storage in our garage. We have a lot of extracurricular hobbies and a lot of exterior decor. And so we're just trying to get some extra space so that we can get it properly stored instead of leaving stuff out and exposed, which is where we are right now.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I guess I'll bring it to the board and if they have any questions they would like to ask the applicant?
I noticed that they have a good tie stretch in front of the house. Does it entirely encapsulate the whole yard, the whole back?
Yep.
Okay, so this shed will probably show to somebody in the back. It'd be hard to see from the street, I imagine.
Yeah, it will, I don't see how anyone would be able to see it from the street unless they were actually a taller individual and right up against the gate. And the back portion of the property, actually the grave drops a bit too. So the area and location it's going to be in, that will help to kind of offset it a little bit. So really with the landscape and everything, it might be somewhat invisible to the back property and the two side properties, but not anything very glaring.
Did you ever talk to neighbors about it or?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we had a very extensive notification list too.
Thank you. And there's a accessory or shed back there now?
There is what shows currently as a shed, but it's a very small, like it only comes maybe to like waist high. So you can just kind of like tuck something in there. And it's, I mean, maybe, I would say like three by, three by seven, yeah, like a little bit longer than it is height. And it's very deteriorated and it's been there for quite some time. So you can't really open things and it's not, nobody can really see it, but it's an eyesore to us too. So the intent is to take that down, obviously, when we put the new one in.
There's some discussion on the height of the, your request in 1.3 foot variance?
Yeah.
Correct? The height of the shed is 14 feet. So in my mind, you would need a four foot variance.
I think that the reason they have it showing that way is because of the loft style.
Right, yeah.
Because I did actually ask that question. We inquired about that, but that's what it seems like. So it's based off the very upper peak of the loft.
Yes, it looks like an average of each brick.
Yes, yes.
We've never done it that way.
I liked the original.
Yeah.
We just, like I said, with the exterior holiday stuff and everything, we try to keep stuff in like original boxes. So we actually did like measurements and things. And the loft space will just allow to like really get stuff out of the way so that the lawn mower and things like that can really tuck under the shelving units.
I think I would have more of a, an issue with the height if you were in like the older section of the village with the yard. Where you are, it's more, it's more suburban. But I think we'd have to, and my, you know, I guess we'd have to change if we decide to go with four feet versus what, 1.3 feet. You'd have to.
Well, so doing, the code, the code says for, in this particular residential district, just unambiguously, accessory buildings shall not exceed 10 feet in height. I didn't have an opportunity to talk to the building inspector as to why he's using the average building height. And in his notes, he says, well, that's the way the town does it. But the town code, if he copied it correctly, says maximum, the maximum average building height of the utility shed shall not exceed, so they actually have an average in their code. But how, again, it makes no sense to me. How can you have a maximum average? If the maximum's the maximum, the average is the average. You can't have both. So the town code is kind of very goofy. So, so to be safe, you know, it's a 4.1 foot variance is what's being requested.
Right. The height of the building does not change. It is what it is.
Yes.
Right. So it's either 14 foot 10, whatever it is, or it's not.
And we'll just educate the village's building inspector that this board goes with what the code says, which is maximum height is maximum height, not average.
Okay, can I ask you?
Yeah.
What is the pitch of your home? What is the style of the roof of your home?
It's a colonial.
Okay.
So it's just the normal standard triangular, yeah.
Okay. I'm just curious because the shed is certainly of an alternate roof design than your house.
Yes.
So is there any particular reason why you didn't go with a peaked gable roof for your shed?
Really just trying to make the most of the space, to be honest with you, is that, that was really all that it was. I didn't, I wanted it to exterior to look nice. It's not just going to be like a standard clean like wood grain or whatever. It's a nice sided, but it was just sheerly for the, the space, to make the most out of what there would be.
So the orientation of the shed, is it 90 degrees to the, so if I'm looking at your house and I look through your house and I look into your backyard, what do I see? Do I see the front face of the shed or do I see the side of the shed?
You would see what would be a side because of where we're going to actually put the placement of the doors towards the back, like facing of our fence. So it will open to like the back side.
Not to the side?
No, no. I think, is it not?
You said the back side.
The short end? I thought we moved it to the other side. Okay.
Sorry.
I thought.
So the doors are on the side of the shed?
Yeah. Is that, is that the typical representation of the shed?
We shifted them a couple of times.
Is that what the shed looks like?
Yes, this is what it was.
All right, so when I look in your backyard, I see that face of the garage, straight, or that face of the shed, straight back?
You will see the longer side because the.
So it's oriented towards the back of your house?
Yes.
Okay. The doors. Yeah, yeah.
Long face.
Yeah, they're saying this is the short side. Doors and foot is over there.
All right, and you have discussed conversationally with your neighbors that you'd like to do this?
Yes.
There are no neighbors here in violent opposition?
Well, the chairman needs to at some point open it to the public.
Right, no, I'm just saying.
So it's in the record.
Right, you, there's no neighbors here.
No.
So, okay. And are you aware that you are allowed five foot setbacks?
Yes.
Okay, but you purposely choose 10?
Yes.
Oh, even better. I know some people just like to shove it right into the corner as much as possible.
No, we want to make sure there's ample room to like, you know, landscape around it and stuff like that easily, so.
Good answer. I'm done.
Any more questions from the board? All right, right now I'd like to open it up to the public. If anybody else would like to speak for or against this, if we can come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, not seeing anybody. I will bring them back to the board for any final discussions.
You did say you're getting rid of the shed, the existing shed, you're getting rid of that?
Oh, yeah.
You would have to, the village probably doesn't allow two accessory structures.
Yeah, even if they did, it's, it's a eyesore, so.
Okay, now hearing any more questions? We do have two items that we need to address. One would be seeker. I believe this is a type two pursuant to seeker.
All right, so I'll make a motion that this action be considered a type two with regard to seeker?
I have a motion.
It's seconded motion.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Right now I'm looking for a motion to either approve or deny this application for a area variance for 28 square feet for an accessory building and a 4.1 foot height variance.
I'll make a motion to grant a variance, a 28 foot size variance, 28 square foot size variance and a 4.1 foot height variance.
I have, I have a motion.
I'll second.
Kathy wins. Kathy wins, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, the second item on our agenda is David Moretti, owner of 175 Donovan Street, tax ID 080.06-1-38.102. Applicant seeks preliminary and final site plan approval for modification to the final site plan approved on April 20th, 2023. Property zone GI.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mike Ritchie from Costage Engineering. I was here in front of this board almost two years ago when you granted a site plan approval for the full development. Just as an update to the project, two of the, actually three of the buildings had been constructed, the most western lot and then one on the most eastern lot. We're here tonight for a modification for the middle lot. Originally it was proposed for two buildings to be constructed on that lot. But after our approval and with coordination with R G N, it was revealed that R G N would not be willing to relocate some, some guy wires. And because of that, it really just pinched the building too close to the shared drive aisle with the eastern lot. So the owner decided to modify and instead of going to two buildings, go to one building. And that one building is roughly, I believe it's 14,000 square feet where the two existing combined buildings were roughly 16,000 square feet. So it's one building, slightly less area. Everything else on the site is generally the same, stormwater management, grading, parking layout. There are some minor tweaks to the utilities because now there's one building instead of two, so don't need two latels. Besides that, oh, one other thing, there was a ditch, a regulated button end ditch that ran through the property. We were able to permit with the Army Corps of Engineers to get a nationwide permit to allow us to fill that ditch. So that was secured back, I believe, in November of 24. So the owner is interested in moving forward on constructing this middle lot with one building as opposed to two. Happy to answer any questions the board has.
Okay, thank you. Now to bring it to the board, any questions?
I do have one. To invite out the use of those, are there any drains in there? I'm just wondering if somebody wants to work on their car. Are there any drains in the, in the bays?
No floor drains.
No floor drains?
Concrete slab, yeah.
And what kind, what kind of usage? Strictly storage or do you plan on, or have they been used for, you know, welding or anything like that?
I don't believe that, I think they've been for storage, you know, the two lots.
No mechanical, no welding.
No, so somebody can't bring a car in there and start working on it?
Not a mechanical shop.
Right.
No oils and all that.
Right, right.
Yeah, I believe the eastern lot has been used by a contractor to store materials. And then the western, I believe it's a contractor from using it again for, for storage. But I know when we were here before, the intent was that, you know, you could subdivide it so different tenants could use different bays. But as of right now, I think with one tenant uses both buildings on the western and one tenant uses the only building on the eastern side. So there really is a subdivision. I know there's another kind of industrial type park down on Salt where it has like 20 different businesses. As of so far, this is really only two businesses, which I think kind of reduces the traffic and, I don't know, what would be on the site. So, and I don't know if that's the intent for this third one, but I think there may be somebody already interested in going there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the board? Okay, again, I will allow public comment if anybody wants to come up and speak about the project. Not seeing anybody, I'll bring them back to the board for some final comments.
I was just wondering, now that these buildings are, I mean, one person's renting the whole building, there was going to be, you could break off the different areas. Is it all just one open area now or?
One open area.
Oh, interesting. I guess that was my question.
You're welcome.
And it was set up that way so it could be, but.
Right, you could be as large as you need it.
Not divided.
Not divided, that's the right word, thank you.
Okay, done, I believe. In order to proceed, do we have to do seeker because this was already done?
Yeah, we, it was determined to be type one because of its proximity to the Hojeg Trail.
Right.
But ultimately, this board determined there was no significant environmental impact with the two buildings.
Reducing it from two to one.
Right, I think you still have to do, they submitted the, a full EAF. So it's still a type one because of the Hojeg Trail and you kind of got to go through whether or not you find any significant environmental impact.
Okay.
Because it is another action because they're seeking another approval.
Gotcha. So I guess we have a task of going for a seeker determination.
It's actually probably a little easier now because back in 23, when you made the seeker determination, they didn't have the permit from the Corps of Engineers with respect to the, to the ditch. And now they do, so that kind of takes that out. That was a significant part of the seeker review the last time.
Now give them to the part two, I know that was issued previously, I don't know if that's needed, this time.
Wait, if you have the part two?
I do, yes.
Can you give that to the chairman?
Can I, if I put my own answers in?
You're probably familiar with those, but that kind of guides you through to what, what you have to do.
So for seeker being a type one, we have to answer some of these questions in order to make our determination. So number one is impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. So since they are reducing the building from, or two buildings to one building, we have to determine, is this a small impact or is this a moderate to large impact? So should every, all aid through?
If the board feels they'd like to hear all that.
I don't, I don't need to hear it.
Okay.
Nor do I.
It would just seem logically if you're going from 16,000 square feet to buildings to 14,000 square feet to a single building, it's probably, there's probably less.
So it's a small impact, would everybody agree it's a small impact? Okay. Let's see. Question two is impacts on geological features. The proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access, inhibit access to a unique or unusual land form on the site. Is that a, do we feel that it's a small impact or a moderate to large impact?
My drive-through is pretty remote area, pretty flat. I don't see a big impact.
If it has a little rain, then it's better.
Well.
All right, so. So small impact. Number three is impact on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, streams, rivers, ponds or lakes. So do we feel that they could get a permit from the New York State D E C to fill in the channel there? So do we feel like this would be a small impact or a moderate to large impact?
Probably it's been mitigated, it's a fairly small impact. We have a permit from the Army Corps.
Question four is impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer. Do we feel that this is a small impact or a moderate, moderate to large impact?
Small to no.
Okay. Question five is impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development of, on land subject to flooding. Do we feel that this is a small or a moderate to large?
Small.
Yeah, since they've installed stormwater facilities and I would agree that it's a small impact. Impacts on the air, the proposed action may include a state regulated air emission source. Do we consider that a small or?
Small, yeah, small.
All right, hearing small. Impact on plants and animals, the proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna.
Small.
Okay, hearing small. Question eight is impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources.
Small.
Small. Okay. Impact, question nine, impact on aesthetic resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and the scenic or aesthetic resource. Do we feel that it's small or moderate?
Small, small.
Everybody's in small?
Yep.
Number 10, impact on historic and archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. So this be the Hojeg, what, it's a small impact of the Hojeg Trail?
Being that it's small, being that that's a long trail, this is not a long.
So we're all in agreement on small?
Yes.
Okay. Question 11, impact on open space and recreation. Proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. Do we feel that this is a small or?
Small.
Hearing small? Number 12 is impact on critical environmental areas. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to critical environmental areas. Do we have, do we have a feeling that this is a small impact or a moderate?
Small.
We're all in agreement on small. Question 13 is impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to the existing transportation system. Is this a small or a moderate?
Small.
Small.
Hearing small. Number 14, impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy. Small or?
Small.
Number 15, impact on noise, odor, and light. The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. Is this a small or moderate?
Small.
I'm hearing small. Number 16, impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contamination. Do we feel that this is a small or moderate impact?
Small.
I'm hearing small. Two more, bear with me. Number 17, consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with the adopted land use plan. Is this a small or moderate?
Small.
As of already started construction. Number 18 is consistency with community character. The proposed action is inconsistent with the existing community character. Is this a small or moderate impact?
Small.
I'm hearing small. So that's all the questions. So I believe we can determine our type one seeker is probably having no significant impact. So I will take a motion on that.
I'll make that motion?
I have a motion by Kathy.
I have a second.
I have a second by Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So now, we, I need a motion for the either preliminary and final site plan approval to the modifications of 175 Donovan Street.
Okay, I will make the motion for preliminary and final site plan modification approval.
I have a motion by Chris.
I have a second.
I have a second by Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is number three, Anthony Carleagio, owner of 16 and 18 and 20 East Main Street, tax ID 080.47-1-15. Applicant seeks preliminary and final site plan approval for the change of use of the first floor from a mercantile occupancy classification to an assembly occupancy classification pursuant to the Village Code, code 175-22B and 175-40B. Applicant also seeks a variance for relief of parking spaces where the number of parking spaces required, one for each 60 square feet of gross floor area, roughly, we're estimating 54 spaces required pursuant to the Village Code 175-53B, property zoned, central business.
Hi, Board, I'm Brian Kulp, an architect with Waves Architecture and Engineering here representing the owner of the company. So, as you can see in your packets, there's really not a substantial change. There's no change to the site being proposed, change to exterior of the building, changes happening on the interior building. As you stated, we're, it's moving from mercantile to a restaurant use. The Village Code is written around a seated restaurant. It's pizzeria, and if you look at drawing A101, which I believe is provided in your packet, you can see, hopefully you see a colored version of A101, otherwise we'll be looking at chins gray. The light blue is really the only area of the restaurant designated for seating, majority of the building's kitchen. Yes, you know, there's staff that is accounted for in our request letter. The reality of pizzeria is it requires short-term parking, five, 10-minute parking. We're asking for that variance to be granted based on the public parking on street, the short duration of which most people visiting the establishment will be there.
Okay, thank you. Board, do you have any questions?
Number of employees?
So that's stated in the letter, I believe it's detailed in paragraph, looks like third paragraph on page two of five. And so basically, what we're looking at here is, let me get it correct. So, thought we had it listed there. I apologize, you need one more of this. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so if you look at the, the fourth paragraph on that page. So basically, the building is currently in the rear with 11 vehicles. We feel that the parking load here will be primarily employee parking, though admittedly, I don't see us, I don't see a listed number, so I apologize.
Just curious.
Yes.
I'm gonna imagine the weekends will be heavier with employees than the weekdays?
Yeah, I mean, it's Friday night and Saturday night, right? Those are really the two evenings where you have the biggest load, aside from, you know, the off chance that there is a, you know, that time of Sunday, you know, Sunday football, that type of thing.
Yeah. Hearing line license?
Yes.
Now, in looking through the information you provided, am I right to understand that perhaps you just, you're using the street level and the lower level? The apartments above, were they?
They're remaining apartments.
Under?
Yeah.
Was the building purchased and apartments went with it?
Yes, so, so the apartments remain, the lower level's really storage, it's not an occupied space for the primary, you know, use of the space. The apartments are remaining, they, and they have a two-space per parking load associated with it.
Okay, thank you.
Where, where do they currently park?
The apartments.
Yeah. Do they designate a parking that they use all the time, or?
Yeah, they're also, it's in the back, the portion of it. So it's three residential units, two parking per, which is a six total parking space. So we're looking at basically a load of 16 for the restaurant, plus those six to get to the 22.
My major curiosity is, how are you going to convert this from mercantile into a pizzeria? And the reason I ask this question is, because I am doing a build-out right now with my company to put a Papa John's pizzeria in in Greece, and it is a nightmare.
Well, you know.
And we are, we have access to the roof, we have access to the walls, and we can't figure out how to get their equipment in this building.
So, so right now, we have obviously a walking cooler and a storage space that have, you know, are on the back of the building. We're basically looking at those double doors and then the new double doors at the front of the building as, you know, being able to accommodate this during construction. But I thought you were gonna ask me the fire partition components of this, and I was gonna say nothing, I never said it was gonna be fun. I just, but.
You're, you're obviously gonna have a pizza oven in here.
Yes.
You're gonna have a cap the bear hood of some nature that has to vent to the outside.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a kitchen hood, actually three hoods that have to come in. Those assemblies, you know, are, those aren't so bad. The pizza oven's the tough part, and it may require a larger, you know, wall cut than we currently show. But the, the owners worked with this pizza equipment provider, so they have seen the building. I don't know what Papa John's is using, if they're using conveyor system. Yeah, so this is a straight oven, so they come in modules that can be stacked. So there's no conveyor equipment necessarily that's gonna come into place, right, which is a little bit larger unit, but it's, it's not gonna be, it's a challenge, right? Anytime you're retrofitting one of these older buildings, it's a challenge.
Right, well, I mean, you just, there is apartment living up above. So you technically are gonna have very difficult access to the roof. So you probably can't vent through the apartments. That means you gotta get to the outside walls. Uh, you go left, right, or rear?
So we're on the, we're on the, on, if you're facing it from Main Street, we're on the left side with one hood, and then we're on a new interior partition with the other hoods. And we do have the ability to create a chase vertically at that location, so we can get to that, we can get to the roof through the apartments just with a vertical shaft. Again, if it weren't a challenge, then we wouldn't be working.
It wouldn't be any fun if it wasn't a challenge.
Exactly.
Does the chase already exist?
No, it's, there's gonna be, we're probably gonna end up reworking the chase, and we gotta have a fire, you know.
Oh, it's gotta be a rated, it's gonna have to be a rated chase.
Absolutely.
Welded steel duck work. Did, yeah, did you, you, has Chris, our building inspector, gone over things with you?
Yeah, they, we've, we've submitted, we've submitted our stamp drawings, our fire safety plan to them. You know, they have certainly gone back and forth. The biggest issue's obviously the fire separation of the stairwells, existing stairwells, so there's some work to do there. And then the, the rated ceiling, obviously the kitchen separate. But then we also have to, we also have to do a sound separation, which this building didn't have. So between the acoustics and the fire rating, we've got a little, little work ahead of us.
Yeah.
If you want nice things, you have to.
Have you been doing, I've noticed trucks, like painting trucks and things, in and out of there, have you been doing some work inside?
I obviously can't speak to what progress has been made at this moment. I'm one of two partners, Jason Havens, who's, I do the code review and analysis on this along with my team, but Jason's been doing the site work and he is the, he's sort of the overall project manager in terms of construction, so.
Okay, I know it's in here somewhere, but what's your optimistic time of opening?
Everybody mods everything right away, so.
Yesterday.
If we, yeah, I suppose if the variance is, is acceptable to this board, then, you know, we'd be looking forward, trying to get this done relatively in short order, but there's decent amount of work to do, and obviously, a lot hinges upon, you know, being able to continue to take this step, so, you know, let's see. I'm always a little hesitant to actually give schedules out when we're being recorded.
Are you proposing any facade changes in the future?
I mean, right now, yeah, there'll, there'll be, you know, signage, obviously, and, and that type of stuff will be submitted, but the moment we're trying to get through, we're trying to get through the, the conversion until, until we know we can move forward with the mercantile to A2, which kind of comes back to this parking issue, so.
Yes.
And again, it's, it's just an anomaly, right? So if this were a sit-down restaurant, and you would expect customers becoming in, you know, seated for an hour or so, or two hours, I would say, I understand the Village Code, but in this case, you know, it's, 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 it's something like fair, there will be some people who choose to sit, maybe that's a heavier lunch crowd, or maybe it's an evening crowd, but the reality is, you know, the majority of the, of it's order takeout.
Do you have any employees, you'll be delivering, I would assume?
Yeah, operationally, I think the plan is to have some delivery, although I don't know, you know, with the prevalence of Uber Eats and DoorDash and all those things, how many dedicated employees there are to delivery?
You're not gonna have like a truck that'll do deliveries, or a car that?
There shouldn't be, there shouldn't be any commercial vehicles specific to delivery, but, you know, if there's, there's probably an employee with a car, I'm sure.
I always think a pizza place needs delivery.
Yeah. Well, again, that's, that's one of those, you know, you order, I think there's five apps now on my phone for Slice, DoorDash, you know. Uber Eats keeps sending me, you know, things telling me I have certificates available, but, so, you know, I think that's part of the culture that we're in right now, is that, you know, a lot of people are doing takeout via app, and, but then again, that's sort of the kind of powerful recourse with, when you're trying to retrofit one of these small village properties with, you know, zero lot line, you know, construction set inside of something, you're gonna deal with some anomalies like the fact that your parking is limited to where it is. So, I think it'll be a good use ultimately, it should lie in the corner.
You mentioned, someone asked if you have a liquor license?
The plan, I would think, long-term, right now, we don't have anything, because we'd have to submit final plans and drawings in order to, in order to do that, so, you know.
So that must mean some sort of dining, seating, and fire.
There is some dining and seating, but, you know, right now, it's, again, it's limited to that.
Right. Does it spawn?
550 square foot and 148 square foot space. So, you know, you always hold out some of those items for later on.
You do have another site, correct?
Yes.
He does, the owner does have another site, yes.
On Empire.
On Empire, I thought. Okay. And it's not strictly pizza, right? It's the usual pizza wings, subs, potentially, or?
Yeah, that's, that's the owner's model.
Okay.
He will offer some variation.
Any more questions from the board? All right, I'll listen into the public. If anybody wants to speak, please go up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
My biggest question is the parking and the, the parking, we kind of downgraded the delivery system, saying it's gonna be DoorDash or somebody else, but there's still vehicles on Main Street and very close to the Four Corners. And when I see the traffic there on a Friday night or other times, I think we're gonna be shutting down Latimer Park because nobody will be able to get out. I can see a problem here with double parking, with people coming to pick up. There is, I have one question, direct question, and that is, is there gonna be a rear entrance? So we can take advantage of the parking that is in the rear?
I can, I'll answer all that on the record after, if that makes sense.
Okay. That's my biggest problem, I can see, because it's so close to the Four Corners. There's many times in the day, and on a busy Friday night or Saturday night, it's very hard to get out of Latimer Park with the traffic backed up from the Four Corners. And with people trying to bar a park, to run in for five minutes, you're gonna see them double park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to wait till there's any other comments?
Anybody else from the public? Okay, not seeing anybody?
Okay, so I'm gonna take those in reverse order. The first answer is no, there is not. The first answer is no, there is not a back entrance. Uh, that doesn't mean that vehicles can't park there. It's, it's simply a matter of how a kitchen gets laid out. So the back of the building is a walk-in cooler, storage and dishwashing, and an employee, um, an employee restroom. Uh, in order to do, uh, have, so there's, there's stairs throughout this building. There's, there's two sets of stairs in the front that lead to the apartments. There's a second set of stairs, um, that's set, uh, along the, the right wall. So the way that this thing lays out basically is we're not receiving food service delivery to come to the back. Uh, but the, the counter and the, the restaurant faces forward towards Main Street, intentionally. We'd like to see people walk in the front, use the front entrance. Uh, that has as much to do with security concerns as anything else. But, um, it's not atypical for pizzerias to be located in tight village spaces. I could point to any number of villages throughout the, um, Rochester, greater Rochester, greater Buffalo area, and show you where, where pizzerias are operational like this. And vehicles are not double parked on their Main Street. Um, you know, the reality is, yes, there's some vehicle volume. Um, but, you know, at the end of the day, uh, there is, there is parking. Um, there is on-street parking. And, um, you know, it's an opportunity to, uh, to fill, uh, right now, an empty commercial space with an active commercial activity. And I can see pizza being very popular, and people using the park. So, you know, with all due respect to the, to the gentleman who spoke, um, you know, I guess I don't think that, uh... I suppose the owner would love for the turnaround to be so bad that it was creating double parking issues, but I don't, we don't anticipate that to actually be the case.
Thank you.
Is, is the back door on the ground level open to the restaurant? So you can get into the back door and go up the stairs, right? Because it seems like the staircase opens directly into the dining area.
So if you look at the, the back stairs, um, you can utilize that, that to get to the dining space. Um, but, you know, again, it's not the sort of primary in and out, right? It's not the service counter. Are you, so are you asking, can you get through there?
Yeah.
Yes, it's not accessible though, it's not an accessible route. And you can't go, get through there, it's just stairs. It serves as our second fire egress as well.
Okay, but if I park down below behind the buildings, I can get to the pizzeria from the ground level behind the building.
As opposed to having that be exit only?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I suppose you can get in that way.
Well, is, is the intent that that door is open? It has to be open, right?
It has to be, well, it's an exit, right? So it has to be available for exiting. Whether the owner leaves it open or not, I don't, I can't tell you that that should be a primary entrance. The entrance is an accessible entrance at the front of the building. If the board said you need to leave that exit door open, that's something I can take to the owner. Um, it's just right now, it's intended to be, it's not intended to be a primary entrance.
Doesn't that sort of create a second layer of questions about where the parking actually is then? Because if you need twenty-two spots, you can't actually get to the pizzeria, or the public isn't going to easily be able to get to the pizzeria from the rear, where are those twenty-two spots?
Right, well, if you don't use the ground floor of the back door, then you have zero spots dedicated to the business. You have street parking?
Because people aren't going to walk around the building.
Right.
Okay, so if the door has to be made open, that's fine. But I'm not, we're not able to turn that into an accessible entrance. So as long as we're clear that, you know, not, if, if the idea is, if we have...
When you say accessible, are you referring to ADA?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, obviously you've got a staircase there, you can't do anything much about that.
Sure, but if it's demarcated as the entrance of the building, then I've got another issue altogether, which is accessible parking near an entrance.
Right.
So... But if, if the board says that there's stipulation that that entrance door has to be maintained as an entrance door, that's okay, as long as I can acknowledge it won't be an accessible entrance.
There is a, uh...
There's no way to ramp it, and we're not providing an elevator.
There's an alleyway here between the buildings for the back parking.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not inconceivable that somebody...
That alleyway is not walkable during the winter.
Well, uh, yeah, we agree.
So, so the village is a walkable center, right? Um, there's parking provided, again, we're, we're providing parking for, um, for customers. We're expecting that employees will park behind so that their employees aren't tying up Main Street spaces. Um, the idea here is that, yes, customers can park back there. Um, we, the preference would be to have customers come into the front of the building. Um, we have maintained this as an exit. And we are utilizing that as, as a secondary exit because there's a stair.
Basically, it's an emergency exit.
Essentially, yes.
Essentially.
But again, this is, this is one of those challenges as to how people are actually going to utilize the building. I, I don't think it's unheard of in this village for people to walk the distance it would take to either utilize the alley or walk around the corner of the space.
That's going to be tough.
Okay, so I would admit that the, the devil's advocate would say, when it was functioning mercantile, were people using the back entrance more than the front entrance?
I would say yes.
Okay, so that what the village would really want, to, to backload all of the, the foot traffic?
Well, no, I think you would have a better chance for your request based on the fact of there is a secondary way to...
So we, we'd leave that door...
I would say it's your main entrance.
I, so we would, we would leave the door unlocked. I'm sure that, you know, leave the door unlocked and, and operable as an entrance. But I just don't want it to be conceived of as a primary. Because when we do signage and stuff, we're going to be asked about primary entrance space.
Right.
Which is clearly got to be off of Main Street. So, okay.
Well, I don't think the intention would be to make it the primary entrance.
No.
None, none of the other businesses along that part of Main Street, yeah, they have rear entrances, but those aren't the primary entrances.
Well, look at Jojo's. The Jojo's has the rear entrance, and you walk up to the stairs, and you're just, easier way, but it's not the, it's not the primary entrance. And when this was the music store, when my kids took piano lessons, they would, we would go in the back, but half the time, you know, they would go out the front, and I would pick them up off of Main Street, so.
I, I don't think that anybody has an issue then allowing that door to be open. And we anticipate people will be exiting that way. There's a vest to be able, so that's fine.
But why can't people go in that way?
I'm saying, no, that's fine, we'll, we'll, we'll adjust that. If that, I mean, that, that's absolutely okay.
It's just not an ADA entrance.
Well, that's what I was going to say, if, well, yeah, it wouldn't be an ADA entrance. They'd still have to use it from it. That would be the primary.
That would be the primary ADA accessible entrance.
But having entrance in the rear gives access to the park.
You're providing an ADA entrance.
We have a full ADA accessible entrance at the front of the building as a primary entrance. And we now have a secondary means of accessing the space through vest to be able to back it up.
Where the secondary means of egress for an ADA?
So the, the dining room is, as is constructed, is, is small enough to be able to utilize that front entrance. It's got the right fire separation, and we meet code. The secondary entrance can be inside of that stair space, but we're not, we don't need to provide a secondary ADA entrance. You don't, always have to, you don't, so if you look at interstate building code, right? We're, we're under a certain square footage, we're in existing building, in existing building code. So, um, we are able to use the stairs as a secondary mean of, means of egress, with the idea that the travel distance to the front door, um, and the fire separations, where we have them create an opportunity for people to exit safely if they're in wheelchair, or to utilize the sort of back end of the space as a secondary resource. Like I said, the, the reality here is we're, we're trying to infill a very small space on a Main Street in a tight location with a use that is not expected to consume all our e-volume of a traditional restaurant.
Any more, any more questions?
This was to get through, uh, you see, uh, in the back, changing this.
So, and the next step would be to do our subject determination. This would be a type two pursuant to secur.
Because nothing's been done to the exterior.
Correct, nothing's been done to the exterior at this time, so. So is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that this is a type, uh, two pursuant to secur.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dave's seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so now we need to determine, um, they have two area, or variance requests, which the first one, um, and we'll do these separately, is a change of use. Uh, it's going from a, requesting from a mercantile to an assembly occupancy.
I'll make a motion to, um, for the change of use for mercantile to...
So Kathy has provided a motion to approve the change in use from a mercantile to an assembly. Do I have a second?
I'll second there.
Peter has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Our second, uh, variance is a, uh, parking variance. Uh, and I believe it's for fifty-four spaces. The code requires, the code requires one space for sixty square feet. And using the first floor of three thousand, two hundred and...
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Literally, that's correct. However, one, one could question, what does it mean by gross floor area? The gross floor area that the public's going to be using? You know, because that's where all the parking's, that's where the parking's coming from.
I think we're going to have to review the parking requirements for...
So, you know, I, I sympathize a little with the applicant saying that, you know, this isn't your typical sit-down restaurant where the majority of the square footage is for the restaurant, you know, for, for the public.
I agree. So, based on my calculation, I roughly calculated nine hundred and sixty square feet is the public space. So if you do...
More or less.
One space per sixty square feet, that's sixteen spaces.
Right.
And I, and personally, I'd like to know how many employees were going to be there because then we can determine that you already have eleven spaces. And then how many spaces are left over, you know, for sixteen? So, I mean, I, the weekend, or the weekdays probably maybe four or five, and weekends are ten. I, it would be helpful to have some of that information.
So again, if, I'm, I'm... I apologize, I'm not, I don't know if I'm able to speak. Okay, so if you look at the, um, page two or five, the second full paragraph, um, towards the end of it, um, Jason's calculations, uh, counting for the inclusion of staff parking, there would be an additional maximum parking load of four spaces yielding a peak volume of sixteen spaces. So if, basically, he's looking at the seven hundred square feet divided by sixty per spot, yielding a requirement of twelve. Um, you know, again, this is, that, that was his takeoff. Whether that's correct, um, you know, I guess it depends on how many employees you have on the site at any one time. That accounts, that, although that doesn't account for the fact that pizzeria staff tends to be young, and some of that could be drop-off or bike or pedestrian activity as well.
Question about the parking lot. Is there a reason the other side of the parking lot in back isn't striped?
So, uh, I think that if that were to be striped, you'd actually see a parking, you'd see, it would end up, um, being a limiting factor in terms of how people currently park. If you, if you watch that, um, site during the day, and then during the evening, uh, you know, sometimes striping you gain spaces, sometimes you don't.
The problem, the issue with that particular, this particular parcel, it was part, right, it was part of when, um, you know, the Jojo's and the buildings in the back were all developed, the village has, um, it actually got dedicated to the village. Uh, although it's an unnamed road, but the village actually owns sort of a thoroughfare that goes through the middle of that parking lot. That's why it was never striped. Um, you know, because if you, if you look at this, this dr, this photo, you know, like the Village Bakery is right where these trees are. And it's sort of, it jags kind of through there. So, you know, there are spaces, they could stripe it up closer to the building.
I'm trying to remember when it was the music store, I thought it was striped there.
You know, it might have been, and then they sealed it at some point, but, you know, um, I don't know. I, I can't remember that.
Right.
You know, I think there isn't a time during the day when the back lots collectively on that side of downtown are full. Well, because Village Bakery's open, they're all pretty much full, usually.
Well, and they would can, you know, Village Bakery closes at three, and then they probably open at three. So it would be offsetting...
Right, and considering other parking for the other businesses that shut down by five, I'm thinking the pizzeria, your business is more evening oriented, for the most part. That between the other business parking, assuming you're going to be good neighbors with them and everybody kobeas and say, "Do you mind if I use your lot in the evenings?" You know, behind that life on the corner.
I believe there's a past practice establishment here, which would make it very hard to become fully without putting up law.
There's actually, there's actually an agreement...
Yeah.
With all of the property owners, except for the former Smith Insurance Agency.
That's what I was going to ask.
They, they refuse to join in with everybody. So they control their, the parking behind that building, although the Smiths don't own that property anymore. Whoever owns it, World and Shermans, whoever that is.
Okay.
But everybody, everyone else agree that it's open to the public.
It's maintained by the village, am I correctly?
What?
Is that parking lot also one maintained by the village as the joint? As some other parking lots are behind businesses on West Main?
You know, if Jake were here, he could answer that. You know, off the top, that agreement was done a while ago.
Yeah.
And I can't remember exactly if the village just plows, you know, the, kind of the thoroughfare, and then the businesses have to plow the parking, or if the village does the whole thing. I'm not exactly sure.
I, I don't know either, I know on West Main, many of the parking lots are maintained by the village.
On the other side, the village plows the entire parking lots. You know, like they do for the, the museum is public parking too, and the village plows. and the village plows that. Village doesn't own that building. But anyhow, you know, I.
So as I.
So, but I, so I don't know how many, you know, of the variance, the fifty-four spaces, you know.
So does it need a variance of forty-three?
Some of them can be used, you know, I don't, since it's not striped, it's hard to count spaces, but. There is a parking within, within the parcel that the applicant owns.
Right, so that's why I'm wondering, is it a variance of forty-three spaces? Because we're including the whole upper floor as the, counting the number of spaces required, which would technically include the public and staff, so. If it's, if we determined fifty-four was required, but they have eleven, so that would be forty-three.
Doesn't matter because it forty-three, fifty-four, you know, there's gonna be on-street parking.
But it seems to make it less of a.
Yeah.
Variance, but. See, I thought that could be really striped again, to have parking on the other side. You could probably pick up another eleven, ten or eleven. No, no, I thought there was a guardrail right there. You can't get through. There is a.
Look at that.
It's always been there as far as I've looked here.
We haven't driven through here.
I've never driven through there.
Is that a car?
No, there's a, there's a.
There's something there.
No, no, there's not a guardrail there. There's a guardrail here.
Oh, right.
Smith's guardrail.
Smith's, you know what, it's curved.
Smith's has the.
Yes, you're right. Smith's, but this is curved from the Village Bakery portion.
Right.
And then there's a swath of probably unmowed grass or whatever. There is a divide.
So aside from being an architect, I practice in urban planning, and we get into this with a lot of villages whose code, you know, ends up putting businesses in front of boards like yours. And some of those villages have moved to zero parking requirements for commercial, or one point five parking per thousand feet of commercial, just generically mixed-use commercial space, with the idea that there's basically a quarter-mile stretch of main street on both sides of the street, plus municipal parking within walking distance. And when you want a walkable hamlet or a walkable village center, you've gotta be able to fill it with businesses. Traditionally, we would build buildings stacked next to one another with limited parking behind. It seems to be that when you want to promote that type of activity, you want that type of lively main street and pedestrian-centric main street, you've gotta count for the fact that codes are written generically around business typologies that really don't, aren't out there anymore. So, you know, I try to encourage people, go to zero parking, see what happens to your village store. Anecdotally.
Essentially, the way this code is written, it does say zero parking because it says up to a hundred percent of the parking space is required.
Right.
May be otherwise located upon a finding that off-site parking is within five hundred feet of the site, and within the same or less restricted district. That takes into account the public parking areas, both on the street, in the back, over by the museum, you know. So that's why I, I, I kind of agree that whether it's forty-three or fifty-four, it might be immaterial.
And historically, we've never denied variance for parking on Main Street.
Right.
Because we want to go usage of Main Street.
Now, the only, you didn't make it a condition of the change of use, but what about the rear entrance? Not just the, you know, you could make it a condition of the parking variance, I suppose, or you can go back and amend your previous one. You need to have that condition somewhere.
Oh, on the rear.
Yeah, that, that, that they're gonna modify their plans to have the, where the stairway is, then that would be a secondary ingress and egress.
You think that might just come into a code requirement ultimately?
I don't know. I'm not a building inspector. I don't, I'm not. That's more your failure with the mine. I'm just saying, if they get a condition, we don't have to worry about whether it's.
Well, then they got to answer the question. If it's a condition of variance, then it specifically must be answered.
Right.
If we don't mention it, then it's just.
Right. That's why I just assume they get a condition of either the change of use or the parking.
And your regional.
It came up. It's to address parking, so you could just incorporate it into.
True. I'm just wondering if we wanna change, amend the change of use because if this changes the use in the future, it would be more tied to the use.
Go with the preliminary.
That's true.
Approval tonight, and final site would have.
You wanna split it?
I don't know that you can split it because the change of use is gonna require a parking load, right?
Yeah, we're not doing.
No, it doesn't need site cleaning.
Right.
So just approval for a change of use.
I think it would be cleaner if we amend the change of use. So it's up to you if you are comfortable with adding the condition that the rear entrance needs to be open to allow the public to access both the rear and the front of the building with the change of use from mercantile to assembly.
Okay, so we're gonna cancel out the first motion now. So part of the approval of the change from mercantile to assembly will be a rear entrance plan egress in the back of the building.
To allow, yeah, to allow the public to.
Yes.
Enter and access.
From the back parking lot versus the front entrance.
Okay. I have amended.
I'll second there.
Peter has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Alright, so now with that being straight, we are back to variance for the parking. And so.
For a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to grant, for positive recommendation to grant the variance for fifty-four spaces for eighteen West East Main Street. I'll second there.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We'll be sure to invite you when we get pizza.
Your chicken, their chicken wing is.
So I think the applicant's number one is here. Yes.
But he's already gonna be calling.
Well, you can, it was without prejudice, so it's sort of. Alright. So I believe our applicant for the table manner is here. So, no, who's it with? No words. Now, pardon me for mispronouncing your name, Yusuf Al-Saidi, Lieutenant of one through three East Main Street, TID zero eight zero point four seven dash one dash two point one. Applicant seeks preliminary and final site plan approval for a change of use of a portion of the first floor from the business occupancy classification to mercantile occupancy classification pursuant to the village code one seventy-five dash twenty-two B and one seventy-five dash forty B. Applicant also seeks a variance for relief of parking spaces where the number of parking spaces required is one for each two hundred and fifty square feet of gross floor area, roughly five spaces required pursuant to village code one seventy-five dash fifty-three B, property's own essential business. If you could please come up, give us your name, address, and what you'd like to do.
Hi, my name is Yusuf Al-Saidi. I'm just obtained lease for first one East Main Street. I'd like to open a juice bar slash convenience store. I see there's not a juice, probably juice around in Wester. The store's around twelve hundred square foot. I've taken it for five years. We'll be offering essential items like groceries, snacks, household goods, making it easy accessible for residents. We plan to hire two local residents to manage the store. We'll be operating nine AM to eleven PM. Our supplies will be delivered during the peak hours with not a big truck, with somewhat of a small van into the main street, you know, space or anything like that. The store will have security cameras, hopefully eight cameras, inside-out for everyone's safety. We'll also make sure that the building is properly let following all codes. We do not have a designated parking, but we have street parking. Basically, we won't change any appearance from the outside of the building, just basically inside shelves and whatever. It's simple. Yeah, if you have any questions, you can ask.
Alright, thank you very much. Board, any questions?
It was nine AM till eleven PM?
Yes.
Are you utilizing both, both halves of that building?
No, just the right half.
So just one on the corner?
Yeah, just the one on the corner.
How about the other room?
No, I didn't get that one as well.
Pardon me?
I didn't get that one as well. Just the twelve hundred square foot on the right.
He's leasing, he's leasing.
The corner? Yeah.
Interesting.
The space inside has already been divided, split up?
Yes.
Yeah, there are, there are two entrances in there.
Yeah.
We've already been to.
There are a couple of.
Yeah, there are apartments of them, yeah.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Tenants.
Right. I'm just thinking the impact to the tenants. The store is basically running all day, eleven PM.
That's true. That's a good point.
There's not many stores on Main Street that are open till eleven PM, because across the street are, we.
We will be having essential items, so therefore the customers, they need their essential items. They don't have to travel to Walmart. Tops will be local to them, and that's why we're aiming to open till eleven, where everybody's closed. In case people just need to play nice stuff, we're available at that time.
Now, what type of merchandise do you plan on selling?
So hopefully, I'm gonna have, we're having, half the store is gonna be a juice bar. Fresh juice, smoothies, like crepes and simple desserts like that. The other half will be just essential needs like, you know, water, milk, eggs, just the basic essentials for everyday use.
You don't plan on beer, wine?
No, no beer, no wine, no weed, no tobacco, no CBD.
Will the juice bar area have seating or?
No, we're just.
Takeout?
Yeah.
Any more questions from the board?
Uh, no.
Right now, I'll let the public, if anybody from the public would like to speak, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the public record. And please address the board with all the questions.
Hi, Richard Walter, Twenty Elm Street. I just wondered how much remodeling this is gonna involve. It is a historic building on the four corners. It has the original, and I'm glad, the original meat cooler in the back, the glass door. It was, when I grew up, it was a second owner of a butcher shop. It has been mercantile before and many other things. And as long as the outside of the building remains the same, I see no objection. Then I assume you're gonna close off the door that was added. By one of the last tenants?
Yeah, as I stated, we won't be changing the appearance of the building or anything like that. We're just bringing our children away.
You just close off the doorway in between?
Yeah.
It was originally, when I grew up anyway, back in the fifties and sixties, there was two separate stores.
The landlord closed that section off separately, so when I came there, it was already closed off, so.
So, it's been a mercantile before, coming in.
Thank you. Yeah, our understanding is that nothing on the exterior is gonna change except some kind of applicable signage. You gotta, you know, get a permit for the sign.
A hundred percent. I already applied for the permit of the sign, and that's the only thing that's gonna be, I'm not inside. Like a little picture of the sign.
So, anybody else from the public like to speak? Seeing none, now bring them back to the board for final thoughts.
Five spaces versus fifty-four. You have to have it for me over.
I guess one, just one thought about the hours of operation. We've got two bars within a stone's throw of the place, and a gas station that's open, I would assume at least until ten, eleven o'clock at night. So it doesn't really seem like that would be too out of character for a place that is literally a convenience store.
Good point.
Alright, so again, we have two items ahead of us. The seeker determination, and I believe this is also a type two pursuant to seeker.
Yeah, I will make that motion as type two seeker with regard to seeker.
I have a motion from Chris. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? And then we have the, I believe it's a change of use from, like, it used to be a.
Business to mercantile.
Yeah, business to a mercantile. Thank you.
I will make a motion for a change of use from business occupancy to mercantile occupancy pursuant to village code seventeen, one seventy-five twenty-two.
I have a motion made by Chris. I have a second by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Good luck. Oh, sorry, wait, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, we have a parking variance. So, we, I'm looking for a motion to allow a five-space parking variance. I have a motion by Dave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Now. Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
What's gonna be the name of the place? I didn't ask that.
We don't have a name yet.
But you submitted an application for a sign, but you don't have a name. That's kinda strange.
It takes a while.
A lot of salties.
Hopefully we'll get busy. Thank you guys.
Alright, we have minutes, we have to do minutes from January sixteenth. As everybody had a chance to review and have any modifications or changes. Or I'll take a motion to approve, Israel. I have a motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? And then it was.
The mayor suggests that this board appoint its own deputy chairman, someone that could, would be the chairman in. someone that could, would be the chairman in Mike's absence.
So, any volunteers?
Any volunteers, anyone who would like to do...
I volunteer Chris Gruber.
There you go.
Second.
I have a motion by Dave.
Fine.
I accept.
Thank you.
Your vote of confidence. Should we vote?
Is it all in?
It should be all in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Would him have a plan for you?
Now, I think Chris is a... I believe that's all we have, and we'll have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Kathy.
Do you accept the minutes?
Second? Yes.
Oh, sorry, this time.
Do I have a second? You're...
Second.
Peter, I have a...
One thing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
One, none, one point. You know, the chairman is appointed by the village board and serves a one-year term. I guess you don't have a term limit, so you're a deputy for...
Deputy on time, Chris. Until I bump him up?
So, does anyone know the difference about how you...
You're adjourned, right?
Speculation.